A couple of things to do before we do that, okay? Great, we're on air, I'm gonna let everybody know, welcome. This is December 11th, I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Xenia regular meeting. We are here tonight and we are going to ask for an invocation by Pastor Al Refit from Victory Life Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Faiz Cerise, and we ask everyone to please stand.
Good evening, it's about our heads over the prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. Lord, we thank you for our leaders, for the city council, our mayor, city administration, Madam Law. Father, we are so grateful tonight in our hearts for these individuals and the leadership that they bring to the table for our city, for our government. We thank you, God, for their commitment to ethical living, biblical values, family values. And Father, we thank you tonight, and we pray, God, that you continue to give them wisdom. We know, Lord, there are decisions they make and judgment calls they make, but, God, they need wisdom beyond their years. And so, we thank you, God, you give them the right resources, they can draw that wisdom and make those decisions. We pray for courage, Lord, it's not easy what they do day in and day out, and we just ask that you give them an infusion of courage to make these decisions and to lead in a path of prosperity, and we pray for continued safety in our community. And, Lord, at the end of the day, we realize that they too are human, and, Lord, they need your strength each and every day, and we bless them, and beyond them, we think of their families, and we bless their families tonight, in Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equalized with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Pastor Refit, thank you Councilwoman Cerise. I'm gonna open our meeting for tonight and call the meeting to order. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
Mayor Urschel?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilman Probst?
Here.
Councilwoman Walker?
Here.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. This is the minutes from our November 25 regular meeting, the minutes are before us. I'll ask if anyone would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Cerise, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes noted to the minutes? All right, seeing none, we'll get a roll call to approve.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
I'm staying.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Before we get started tonight, I would like to make a procedural motion on behalf of council. I would like to move that the City of Xenia send a formal letter to Green County Commission affirming our commitment to work together towards a solution that keeps jobs and county services downtown and at the courthouse. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All right, thank you, we'll get a roll call to accept that procedural motion.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilwoman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight, so we're gonna go right into audience comments. And keep in mind, folks, we do have the public hearing, which will follow after audience comments. So if you're here tonight, just to speak on a general topic, you're more than welcome to come up, address city council. Keep in mind, this is not a question and answer session, it's not a bartering session, we are just here to listen to your concerns, and you can speak to council. All right, we're gonna go ahead, close the public comments under audience comments, we're gonna move into old business, I know that's what you guys are here for. Our first item tonight is public hearing, this is for ordinance 2025-33, which is approving a major change to the concept plan for a 52.36 acre Timber Ridge Plan Unit Development. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, sir. Our proposed homes has submitted an application for approval of a major change to Timber Ridge PUD concept plan. This would modify the total number of units, the density for the site. As laid out in the agenda report and presented previously at your last meeting, there were a number of concessions that were made as part of that overall plan. The proposed changes were reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on November 12th with a public hearing. Lots of conversation, obviously, with that, as I suspect there may be tonight, but Planning and Zoning voted to recommend that the council approve the application for the major change, so that presented this evening for your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right, now see, we have Mr. Forshner here, he's our city planner as well. So at this time, I am going to ask any of my colleagues if they have any questions for Mr. Merriman before we open the public hearing.
Yes, a question for Madam Law, could we just reiterate the basis for our determination tonight from a legal standing on approval or disapproval?
Absolutely. Under our land use code, you are subject to the same limitations as Planning and Zoning Commission, there are criteria, and you have to make a decision based on what's been presented in the packet and the testimony that's given this evening during the public hearing as to whether this application meets that criteria or not. The way that case law has read, if you find it meets all the conditions, you don't need to go through and specifically state each one and why. If you find it does not meet one of the conditions, then you should make that as a finding of fact, I find it does not meet this condition, and this is the reason why I find that.
All right, any other questions? All right, no other questions for Mr. Merriman? Can you explain, before this came to council, the procedure that this went through, through planning and planning and zoning?
Yeah.
Can we explain that to the audience?
Yeah, actually, I asked Mr. Forshner to come up, he can give you a pretty good overview. Thanks, Brian.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, you were asking about the process that led us to this point. Yeah, so, the applicant applied for the PUD concept plan update and worked with staff, presented their initial plan to staff, staff identified a number of changes based on anticipated neighbor concerns, as well as just what makes for better design, and minimizes the impact on the surrounding neighborhood, enhances the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant agreed to make those changes and incorporated those into the plan that was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission, things like buffering from the existing neighborhood, requiring a traffic study, and requiring a speed production study on US Route 68, making sure all that happens before construction happens, and also exploring ways to connect the neighborhood to Little Miami Seating Trail. All of that was incorporated, as well as some elevated architectural standards and square footage standards. That was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, they voted to endorse it after that.
All right.
Anything you want me to drill down on, or any other questions?
I think that was pretty concise.
Okay.
I think we're good with that, thanks, Mr. Forshner. Okay, so, we're gonna go ahead, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the major change concept plan for Timber Ridge Plan Unit Development. You can either speak in favor or against at this time. We do ask you come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and I will limit comments to less than three minutes, so go ahead and get started. Who would like to come first?
My name is Matthew Bennett, I own Anderson Williamson Insurance Agency here in Xenia, Ohio. I also reside at 2536 Ridge Road in the Timber Ridge Development. As a owner that's lived up there for 10-plus years, this is not the first time it's come to you guys to be, had the PUD changed. It's always been turned down, because the PUD that is in place matches the PUD that we live in. Unfortunately, times do change. I need Xenia to develop, because I have a business here. As Xenia grows, I grow, but we have to grow in a smart and practical way. Ultimately, when it gets down to the brass tacks, we need new housing, because it attracts new people, attracts new tax dollars, but at what cost? Putting them in such a small space and lot size impacts the other homes that are already there, that are on bigger lots, with more lighting, the more, you know, the different things that it bring to it. If you've been to our neighborhood, we do not have sidewalks, we do not have streetlights, because it was never intended to be what it is going to be turned into. And all the traffic that will come through our neighborhood, it's not built for that. There's no safe way for people to get off the streets, there's no safe way for people to be able to still walk up and down the roads. If you come there on every night, you'll see four or five couples that walk our cul-de-sac every night, because it's quiet, it's nice, but with all, we have maybe four or five cars in our total neighborhood. We're not against development, there's three lots that has not been developed in Timber Ridge currently. Behind us is the Tuxa Land Trust that will never be developed, so we don't have to worry about homes on one side, because, you know, it's all farmland and will never be developed. This is a great area for homes, we're all about the PUD that's in place. If they wanna follow that PUD, absolutely. There's nothing that you can say to do, or we can do, if they followed it, it's already been approved, they can build all the houses they want, as the PUD states. We think changing the PUD to lock down the sizes of the lots, to build, you know, big square foot houses, all our houses in our neighborhood are at least 22 to 2500 square feet and above. We are trying to maintain our value, we're trying to make sure that we keep our neighborhood as nice and neat as it is, not to say that the new developer won't, we love that they wanna invest in our community, but at what cost? We think that it's too crunched up, we think that if they came back with a revised plan to maybe spread it out a little bit, we would be all in favor, but as the way it sits, it currently does not jive with our plan. I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you for, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Who else would like to come forward?
All right, thank you, Brevity, good evening. My name is Mark Koskowski, I'm at 2511 Ridge Road, so the southern portion, there's only nine homes that are truly impacted, if you're to kind of punch through into the new development. This was supposed to be our retirement home, I'm duty Air Force after 22 years, but that deal is now off, it's kind of a deal breaker for us. Somebody will come in, not a big deal for one family, I get it, however, going forward, as Mr. Bennett alluded to, there's some legacy there that's gonna, you know, no longer be maintained. I think a good solution potentially is, there doesn't need to be a connection, we're solving a very, very minor problem for the city, we're out of code because of the length of our street, we've been that way for probably close to 30, 40 years at this point, the city has other issues to deal with than needing to connect to us. I feel the vacant lot that is on the south side, near the Dollar Store, if you will, on the north end of 68, is viable for this developer, given their magnitude and scale and scope, multi-billion dollar conglomerate, it's more than reasonable to buy a small, one and a half acre lot to accommodate a connection point and leave Timber Ridge as it is. There are other means out there, I don't think it's a very large ask. Additionally, the fire risk is increasing, regardless of we connect or not, we're still increasing. The city's plan is currently to push it to the south and southwest of the city, and here we are developing more and more on the north edge. There are small handshake agreements that seem to be discussions only to get Xenia township, but when you actually solicit them, that doesn't look very viable either for the city, so regardless, the planning is still gonna potentially happen, and development will potentially happen, that needs to be considered. Finally, I would hope that, given all the historical precedents of North Xenia, how we just got our new state park up there, we should probably, hopefully, collaborate with historic society and see what we're actually getting into. We find airheads in our yard sometimes, so it happens a lot, I hope somebody has at least considered that for out of respect and the legacy and the history in this region, so hopefully the developer's taken a good look at that. So, once again, in conclusion, I think it's very reasonable for the developer to go ahead and the city and leave Ridge Road as it is, and punch out or connect, if you will, to the southern edge of a vacant lot that is currently available and for sale and has been for a long time, leaving the Ridge, Timber Ridge community intact, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, opportunity for someone else, who else would like to come forward?
Hello, I'm Melanie Anderson, I'm at 1548 Deanne Drive in Xenia, north end. I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Xenia. I voted no, because I feel like the community, the Ridge, what is it called, Timber Ridge Community, wasn't really informed well on this process, and that's why they're here today. Also, I believe it can easily, they can easily have a compromise if they'll do a little bit more work with this plan. I believe they don't want the road through, I believe you can easily change the plan that you're looking at, to take out houses that's close to them, probably about 10 houses, and leave some of the woods. The other thing is, this is all wooded acreage where there are deer, so I'm in favor of, you know, keeping some of that wood, and this place is called Timber Ridge for a reason, so we're taking out all the trees, not all of them, but quite a bit of the trees, and I would like to see, you know, more space between the houses and the physical Timber Ridge area. There's only 33 feet between the lot, the new lot, and the existing houses, so there's not a whole lot of space there. And, I guess that's it, I think it would be easy for you to say no, let's revisit this, and so, I'd like you to vote no. That's it.
Thank you, Melanie Anderson. Who else would care to come forward at this time?
My name's Alyssa Varble, I live at 2495 Ridge Road. I apologize if I talk really fast, being that we have two and a half, three minutes. The original PUD approved for 63 units with lot sizes between a quarter acre and 1.33 acres. Section 1 was approved for 24 lots, only 19 were built. What was not mentioned in their Planning and Zoning meeting, or the previous city council meeting, was they are not simply undeveloped, three were purchased and wanted to be combined into one larger parcel to build a large home and have a large piece of property, it was denied by the city, so they have remained undeveloped by the owner, who just passed away. The other belonged to the late Dick and June of 2537 Ridge Road, who it is now for sale by their children, and the last is owned by myself and my husband. We purchased it intentionally for land and green space. These lots were not vacant, or abandoned, or undeveloped on purpose, or they were on purpose, they're not, you know, just hanging out to just be hanging out. The proposal to increase from 39 to 88 is excessive. To claim there is no demand for homes in our price range or property type is simply false. In the past year, 59 homes in Xenia met this, met the criteria of our neighborhood, at least 2,000 square feet or more, three home, three bedroom or more, two or more bathrooms, a garage, and at least a quarter acre. They sold in under three months, many within days, and often at above or at asking price, especially with the larger lots. With the Honda plant, which is constantly brought up, being built in Jeffersonville, the salaries that are projected at this plant are 70,000 to over 200,000, with the median being 125,000. A single income that supports a home purchase is, with 125,000, is between 450,000 and 510,000, providing their debt-to-income ratio. Now, if that person has a spouse, you can only imagine what they can afford. Yet Xenia has a slim market for the buyers in this range. Approving a dense, lower-priced housing only widens that gap in this area, so you're gonna push them to Bellbrook, Centerville, Beaver Creek, and beyond. We already have Grandstone Trace struggling to sell, Eden Bridge opening new phases, and Summer Brook expanding. Adding high-density homes half the price of existing Timber Ridge properties on one of the most expensive streets in Xenia will kill our property values and diminish our neighborhood's character. Traffic is still another concern. Since Grandstone Trace connected to Fairground Road, Hollywood Boulevard has seen a dramatic increase in cars, deliveries, and congestion. Expanding Timber Ridge is another...
Ma'am, I'm gonna go ahead and let you know, you're over three minutes, I'll let you go ahead and finish up, okay?
We are not against more housing, we know that eventually it will be developed, and that's fine, but we would like it to stay within its existing PUD. Finally, safeguards must be considered against investor purchases, additional head housing, or landlords who maximize rent. Without protections, speculative ownership will destabilize neighborhoods and erode long-term value and the tax income that would benefit the city.
Thank you.
Hi, Cody McCormick, 2405 Ridge Road. So, the homeowners who bought property at Timber Ridge, like myself, relied on existing zoning laws, which ensured their neighborhood's character and density would stay the same. Now, the rezoning now disrupts these reasonable expectations and deviates from our investments. Improving the rezonings would betray the trust of the residents who invest in Timber Ridge, based on initial zoning regulations. In the understanding that the neighborhood remain a low-density upscale community, the city has a responsibility to uphold the expectation of its residents to protect their investments. The rezoning appears to favor Clayton properties and Arbor Homes, as seen the developer at expense of a wider community and current residents. The main goal seems to be boosting the developer's profits rather than serving the public interest. The new zoning laws unjust force Timber Ridge residents to accept their agreements that we did not voluntarily agree to. You're threatening our property rights, causing many to lose their investment in the face of financial hardship, fostering a perception of unfair treatment to Clayton properties and Arbor Homes, not the residents of Xenia. As I try to keep an open mind on the property that is being built, my daughter and I took a walk right next to Highway 68 where these houses are gonna be built. As she was trying to talk to me, I could not hear a word that she was saying. This is on a Monday evening, as cars were passing by. As a community health nurse, I went to go get my decimal reader and come back to that location. I was reading decimal readers at 65 to 80 decimals, that is the same as almost a rock concert. You're causing, you're asking families to build homes right next to Highway 68 as cars are passing by. I want to revisit the zoning meeting that we had. We had zoning members say, oh, this is the first I heard of this, had questions, had not been prepared for the meeting. This lack of readiness suggests that decisions have been made with incomplete information in rush circumstances. This, they're making a decision on our financial future. I want to finish with this, as one of the zoning commissioners, Stephen Sorice, and I hope I said his last name right, he said, "Change is unavoidable, there's nothing that we can do, our job is to regulate," demonstrates a failure of zoning and commissions of taking unlawful actions and establish safeguards against rezoning. You guys have the opportunity to make that change, you have the opportunity to regulate and keep the PUD as it is, so we can keep our investments where we bought our house, and so our family can have it.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else care to come forward at this time?
Hello, thank you for listening to me, my name is Penny Stewart, 2589 Ridge Road, and I'm just here to support a lot of what's been said here. I am not against development, because taxes need to be paid, cities need to run, but I don't think making a big blank dense condensed area of 88 houses in the area you want to put it is the answer. I believe, and this is just the way I believe, that Xenia deserves, deserves a community of space that they feel comfortable in. I don't think just building houses to be building houses is what Xenia deserves. We deserve people who want to come here, be part of the community, not just shoved into little spaces. And, I love where I live, I love Xenia, but I'm rather disappointed that we were not brought into any of this conversation. It was between one person, they call a staff, and the builder. And, I was very disappointed also with the meeting where one of the residents who was on the council said, "Well, you're gonna have a walking path to go to the bridge, to cross over to the bike path, the bridge is down at the new council house. We can't walk down there, even if they've built something to walk down there, that is dangerous." And my other big concern is, it said that a safety, safety would be looked at, but that study will be looked at before construction. Will that study be done before it's agreed to do that construction? If that study is provided to be very dangerous, will this stop? Will it already be changed, and somebody else can come in and try to do it again? It's, I've been in a situation before where they had decided to change the PUD and then find out it wasn't working for them, and then it was completely dropped. So, the study, I believe, should be done before the PUD is changed, but I really believe that keeping the PUD the way it is would benefit Xenia, and it would benefit us, because we love where we live, and I'm seriously saddened that it wants to be turned into a stripped-out, jammed-up neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to come forward at this time? Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mickey, and I live at 2670 Ford Ridge Road. My neighbors have been very elegant in presenting information to you guys, I'm not that kind of guy. I just have one thing to point out, and that is, is that when we make decisions, we're faced with, you know, what's the best thing for our community? And sometimes we don't stop and consider unintended consequences. I would ask to draw a picture for you. Do you know the difference between a pickle and a cucumber? The difference between a pickle and a cucumber is that a cucumber can always turn into a pickle. A pickle can never turn back into a cucumber. I would submit that if a decision is made to change the way that this development is being made, it can't go back. I would submit to you for your consideration that the state park is gonna draw people into our neighborhood and go, wow, look at these houses up here, we all have more houses like this up here, not smaller houses. So I'd ask that you pause, consider the actions that you take, because the actions that you take may not be able to be reversed, just like a pickle can't become a cucumber again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else care to come forward? This is the Plan Unit Development Timber Ridge Project, this is a public hearing, so...
Do you mind if I, please?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, you can both speak, but one at a time.
I'll try to talk as fast as I can. I want to thank you all for being here tonight and for serving the City of Xenia, every one of you.
So ma'am, can you go ahead and state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Margene Taylor, 2461 Ridge Road. As you know, the south end of this property is currently zoned for the remainder of the 34 and a half acres. When this is followed through, it would coincide with the lots that are there, as you know. I'll try to knock some of this out. If we can bring, see, it would represent the entrance into Xenia on the north end well, if we followed that. Something can be, something we can be proud of for many years to come. I know there is a builder who would be able to work with this land in such a way that the people would not have to suffer living in depleted development or poorly built homes. If we put well-made homes on the right-sized lots, it would encourage people to build here. People want a place to live, but they also want to live in homes they can depend on, that they can rely on. that they can rely on, to give them what they have imagined. This builder, in the proposal, can do none of that. Poorly-built homes, poorly-developed, no regard for God-given land or the people who want to live there. Just put these houses up as close as they can, destroy the land, all the trees, and then leave town and go on to the next one. "We have no choice," it was said. Then, why are we here tonight? Of course, we have a choice. That's why we are here tonight. They want land that surrounds... The people that would buy up there want land that surrounds them with protection from noise and light pollution, as in the hill on 68. Trees that clean the air we breathe and cool us in the summer and provides for the wildlife all year round. Yards big enough to plant a garden. This would not be possible on these small lots. The proposed builder won't tell you that their homes start falling apart after a short time, which we have heard testament to that right here in this room. People want to be able to live in homes for a very long time. Think about how bad this would be if we filled Xenia with all of these homes just to have them fall apart. I know there are parties who, in their excitement, they just want to get people in homes without thinking about the consequences or the outcome, as was stated. They will permanently remove... They, the builders, will permanently remove that which can never be replaced. Did you know it takes almost...
Thank you, ma'am. Just letting you know you're at three minutes, so go ahead and wrap it up if you could, okay?
Did you know it takes almost 30 to 40 years for an oak tree to reach maturity? Trees absorb a lot of sound. There is nothing more important to our peace of mind than quiet. We would not get this from this builder. If we lose the barrier that we have now, it would be a disaster for all the families that live there now and all that are to come. I am referring to the hill on 68. It's the only protection we have. Imagine how you would feel if this came in around your home and your family. If we had a caring builder, he would take care of those things, take those things into consideration. It would be so much more desirable to want to live and invest in Xenia. People want to buy larger homes, just as happened on Timber Ridge recently. Wright Patterson Air Force and its families are always looking for homes.
But you're over four minutes now. Thank you so much.
Okay, I just want to say this. In referring to the documents, the legal documents that we have on our covenant, Code 1 of Regulations in Timber Ridge Property Owners Association, 2 Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions of Timber Ridge Development Incorporated, and number 3, Timber Ridge Section 1 Plan, Unit Development, which contains the covenants for Timber Ridge, those documents reference all 50-plus acres, including undeveloped land. The documents state that they apply to any further plans. Thank you.
All right, sir.
Do you mind if I hand out the presentation?
You can hand that out.
Please, thank you.
All right, I will keep this brief, hopefully get you home before the snow comes. So, jumping in, just on the second page...
Can we get your name and address?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Brian Henning, Land Entitlement Manager with Arbor Homes, 9050 Center Point Drive. So, obviously, we have 88 homes being built here potentially. It's 2.58 homes per acre, which is the recommended density in the comp plan is 2 to 4, so we're kind of in that lower band. Obviously, we've anticipated a lot of these concerns from existing residents, and we've kind of changed the design quite a bit to address those, including kind of the big buffer area that's 25 to 70 feet deep, depending on the location. The hope is to kind of keep the mature vegetation there so we don't have to plant new plants. We're adding walking trails and playgrounds, and obviously, we're making some pretty major infrastructure investments, adding a sidewalk up to the existing bridgewood drive, adding a connection to the bike trail across Detroit Street. We've also heard a lot about the cut-through traffic. We knew that was going to be an issue potentially, so we designed the community to address that. So, on the second or the third page, that red line that's shown on the plan is equidistant to each entrance, which is approximately 1,224 feet to each. Essentially, any trip going south, it would make sense to go through the new entrance. And then, there's a handful of lots where if the party is traveling north, they would potentially cut through, but I think you can see by the plan that it makes a lot more sense just to use the new entrance. We will be kind of putting a model home and sign at that new entrance, basically kind of habituating people using that new entry. We'll be doing a traffic study and speed study. Those will be completed before we submit for final development plans, so all that information will be compiled into the final plans. Yeah, I guess, next page, we've got Arbor Homes product line. We've got 12 floor plans with five elevations or more for each one, with ranches and two-story homes. It's great for empty nesters or kind of growing families. We have square feet between 1,200 and 3,200, not including the garage. Obviously, you've heard that we've agreed to some square footage minimums to kind of bring kind of larger homes closer to the existing homes, as well as architectural standards, kind of enhanced architectural standards that are above the base zoning. Our average sale price is 360 to 370, can get up as high as the low 500, so we really don't see, you know, the price difference between the existing homes and these homes. Unfortunately, I'm sure you guys have heard, road infrastructure has gotten very expensive, so kind of the way we design these communities now is kind of smaller lots, so we don't have to put as much road infrastructure in, but we have, you know, 30% open space, and we have those amenities, and that's where the green space comes in. So, yeah, I will leave it there. I don't know if you guys have any questions or anything.
Madam Law Director, is it appropriate if...
It might not be.
Is it appropriate if anyone on council has a question they can ask?
Yeah, if the public can, absolutely.
All right, great. I'll open the floor. Thank you, you kept that down to three and a half minutes. So, we'll give you a chance to speak in the back there in just a second, okay? So, we have some... We're going to open up council if you have questions.
Yeah, not for the developer, but for the net.
Okay, sure. Any questions for the gentlemen here?
There was an interest of preserving as many of the mature trees as possible in this development.
Yeah.
Is that something that you now have stepped into and add in consideration?
So, yeah, we don't have a final count on what trees we can preserve. We just added that 25 to 70-foot buffer so that we can preserve those trees. It makes it more likely, whereas if we put lots right up to the existing lots, you know, those lots will have to be graded and those sorts of things. So, we tried to design the communities such that it's a lot easier to keep those existing kind of vegetation and trees there in the open space.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Yeah, we still have the public hearing open. You're welcome to speak for or against. Sir, you can come to the podium.
My name is Ron Taylor. I live at 2461 Ridge Road. I built my home in 1990 and have lived there since 1991. I have lived in Xenia and worked in Xenia for 48 years. You know, I have been dealing with rezoning here for 30-plus years, and to ask me to limit to 2 and 1/2 to 3 minutes is asking a heck of a lot. You may not get it. I may go over. I also had another letter that was given to me by Bob Geyer, who was the former...
Yes, not to cut you off. We got a copy of that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I hope you guys will all look at that and consider what he had said. For the past 34 years, I have tried to protect the integrity of Timber Ridge. All of our homes were custom-built using brick and stone and wood. We signed a covenant with the developer to protect the beauty of our wooded ridge. We pledged to take as few trees as possible to maintain its beauty. There have been a number of attempts to change the initial plan of this development. Our lots were to be at least a half acre. Even the undeveloped land was plotted for 44 lots of comparable size. I have spoken to the Xenia Zoning Commission, as well as the city commissioners over the years, to protect this undeveloped land. The last time was in the holiday season, just as now, to prevent the construction of a 90,000-square-foot assisted-living facility. And now, we are here again. This time, a developer wants to build 89 homes on 34 and 1/2 acres with lots averaging about 2/10 of an acre. We met with the zoning commission last month. The planner presented what the developer wanted. Seven of the residents spoke out against this. Two other residents have written letters to your commission. Letters were sent to the planner as well for modifications. These suggestions, for the most part, were denied. One planning commissioner, Melody, wanted to delay a vote pending further evaluation. This was denied as the remaining commissioners wanted to vote right now. The commissioners had no interest in further discussion. The vote was 4 to 1. This gave the appearance of rubber stamping. Now, the commission must look at this land. There is a continuing ridge running from US 68 westward that protects Timber Ridge from noise and lights. If you plan to proceed, that land will be leveled. Hundreds of trees will be decimated. Open cars will be allowed to go into Ridge Road. The planner said there would be little impact on the environment, air quality, wildlife, or property values. I do not believe that. In summary, I asked the commission to deny this request. There must be other areas in Xenia for development that won't destroy this beautiful land. We have an opportunity to save this land for Xenia's future growth. To deny this would be a sacrilege for this land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we did let you go over a minute longer, so thank you. Appreciate that. Yep, sir, go ahead.
My name is Kurt Sanders. My wife and I live at 2485 Ridge Road, Lot Number 24. My wife was raised in Xenia, and we have lived in Timber Ridge neighborhood for over 13 years. We fully support responsible planned development in Xenia, Ohio, to support the growth. This is why I, along with the Timber Ridge neighbors, are here tonight for your better understanding of our opposition to this design for the south parcel of Timber Ridge neighborhood. There are significant project issues, both legal and budgetary, that some zoning committee members did not thoroughly investigate or ask questions, given that they were presented with the design that evening. Only one zoning member who is here tonight requested that it be tabled. The zoning members approving the new zoning design have delegated the ultimate decision to you for financial and legal review. I have sent each of you an email last week addressing the financial issues with the various studies, along with the handout tonight, highlighting the Timber Ridge plan development and the legal covenant that governs it. For the audience and city council members, a restricted covenant, such as the one on page 2 of the handout that I gave to you, and understand, page 1 shows you the entire plan as it was designed in 1989 and addresses that covenant, is a legally binding clause in a property deed that limits how a property can be used or what it can be built on. These covenants are typically created by developers or homeowners association, like ours, to maintain property values and neighborhood character. They run with the land, meaning that they apply to all future owners of the property. Examples include restrictions on architectural styles, home sizes, and property maintenance. For example, tonight, you heard this 89 lots, 3 and 1/2. You probably did not understand that between each house is 5 feet lot lines. So, that's 10 feet between each house. So, I don't understand how a 3,200-square-foot house can be built and somebody would want to purchase them. The State of Ohio Revised Code, Section 5301.85, recognizes a restricted covenant as a legally binding document that runs with the land. The Timber Ridge development purchased as a single parcel in 1989 includes a restricted You will see highlighted the differences in that covenant to the design that's being presented to you today. It's including minimum home size of 2,000 square feet, a garage of at least 400 square feet, time to build, lot maintenance, etc. It's very detailed. It's the reason why we have such good home values in that area and will accept a building that needs that PUD for the parcel that's in question tonight. These covenants and restrictions run with the land and shall be legally binding. The covenant was executed in court in Green County in May of 1989 by the landlord and has been renewed in courts with its terms.
Sir, no disrespect, you're over three minutes. That's okay. Go ahead, come to a conclusion for us, okay?
Thank you. So, you know, the Timber Ridge residents are prepared to employ a real estate attorney to review our legal rights for the land restrictions of Timber Ridge should the council choose to accept this design that's presented tonight. So, in summary, the project presented tonight lacks the required contractual details for various traffic studies. For example, you may ask yourself, "How are these traffic studies independently assigned? Which Ohio certifications are assigned? How have recommendations been reviewed? And more importantly, where does the financial burden for the implementation of the studies fall?" It's not clear, and it can't be in a PowerPoint presentation. Some of this stuff really needs to be contractually done. So, in summary, there's a plan to build on the premium parcel as it's currently zoned, and this is why the legal covenant exists. It's just not the design presented here. Please push back on this design tonight, I implore you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For the extra time. You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else? Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item tonight?
Katie McCormick, 2405 Ridge Road. I just kind of want to back what everyone else has said. There's not too much more I can add to it, but I want to push back on what the developer said a little bit, because if you pull up the map and you're talking about incoming traffic, my house is on the corner right where all these new homes will be built. So, when I purchased this home, the reason I did it is because of the way it was already zoned, because I wanted big lots. So, in the... It shows that there's 20 feet of a distance, so all of these homes are going to have a sidewalk and streetlights, but it's going to be right next to our home with all this new traffic, and our kids and all the kids in the neighborhood would not have sidewalks. And if you look on the map also, the entrance, like going south, if you're traveling south, maybe you would use the south, the new entrance, but if you're traveling north, or if you're traveling north, you might use the new entrance, but if you're traveling south, you would just cut through. But if you're traveling south, you would just cut through. So that's not... They're not going to only use the new entrance. That still opens up a lot of traffic to a neighborhood that was not developed for that much traffic. And then also, the reason we bought our house... We both work in Columbus at Ohio State, and we searched an hour radius of all of Columbus. And we landed on Xenia because of the neighborhood, because of the way it was zoned. We purchased it knowing it would be developed, but that we would still have big lots. So Arbor Homes put in like their proposal that young families want like the smaller lots, and they want like these new developments, and they don't. They want their kids to go outside. They want to be able to open the door and let their kids go outside. They want their kids to be able to play soccer in the front yard. But doing all of this will take all of that away. Same with the vegetation. Next to my house, there is not a bunch of trees. So trying to preserve all of that, and then there's all the houses. So there really is no preserving of any of the trees or any of the vegetation that they're talking about because it's the houses are going there. So I'm looking at the map now. All of the... What would be preserved would not be what we bought into. It would be on the opposite side where we don't get to see that, or that won't affect what's there. It'll only benefit the new development. And everything, I just really pushed back against this and hope that you can at least agree to revisit this and end like our community where our road is and start a new development while leaving ours alone or sticking to the original PUD that we all bought into. Because otherwise, we're kind of being forced into a financial agreement that we never agreed on. Thank you.
Thank you. Another opportunity? You already spoke, ma'am. You already spoke. Sorry. Someone else can speak on your behalf that hasn't spoke already?
Hi, I'm Bob Stewart, twenty-five eighty-nine Ridge Road. I wanted to go last. I had this big briefing I was going to give you guys. After listening to everybody, I agree a hundred percent with what, starting with Mr. Bennett and ending with the last lady, Ms. McCormick that just spoke. I agree with everything they said. So a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. I just want to bring a couple of different kind of points of views in as fast as I can, kind of like doing a military briefing. I retired from out at Wright-Patt. Between my military time and civilian time, I worked out there for forty-six years. Met my wife here in Xenia. What she failed to tell you was she was born and raised here. Grew up on Franklin Avenue. The house is still in our family on Franklin Avenue. We're both sixty-six years old, so you can kind of do the math. We left here in eighty-two, and when we came back in eighty-seven, we moved to Xenia because we wanted to be closer to her family. My family lives in Georgia. Shoot down seventy-five, nine hours were there. We've enjoyed it. We lived on Drummond Drive. I lived on Country Club for twenty-one years. And we saw this house that came available, and we jumped on it because we had a little bit more trees and everything. I lived next door to Jack Duncan, that used to own Heritage Bike Shop. Great place to live. It took this house to get me to move from there to where I am now. I just want to say that the neighborhood that we have is unique and special, and we have a great community. We all stick together. We have a great time. What I'm worried about is when you put in these eighty-eight houses, and the last time I spoke, you know, I just did simple math. You figure there's four people in a family. So it's rounded up to four hundred people. You're going to have to have fire and EMT, all that kind of stuff. I think it's going to be difficult for them to cover that. The reason I say that is because across the street from me, in a house that's for sale, we had Dick Gorman, who was very, very sick the last year or two. The ten and a half years that I've been there, I've been helping to take care of him. Did it with Bob DeLonge, football coach here. They moved away to New Carlisle to be close to the family. And then when Mark moved in, Mark started helping me take care of Dick. Fallen down, busted head open. We call EMT. We wait on him, wait, and finally they show up. You have four hundred... Or eighty-eight more houses, four hundred more people. It's even going to be worse, and you don't have the infrastructure to support that. That's what worries me. I saw it firsthand. Almost monthly, we were calling him. He had cell phones on a feeding tube at the end until he finally passed away. So that kind of scares me about what's going on. Also, the road that we have, if it does go, if this new development does happen, again, we have no sidewalks. A lot of us walk. I walk at night. And we have a stop sign right there when you go on our development. Like everybody, we have UPS, Amazon. We have people coming up trying to sell us stuff all the time. Nobody stops at that stop sign. The people that come up there, they just zoom right through there. It's very dangerous. Now you add this other road coming in with even more traffic, and a lot of us like to walk. It's going to make a very, very dangerous environment. Susan DeLonge, when her grandchildren would come, it was so bad that she would put these yellow placards out that said, "Warning, stop." Stop sign, children at play, to try to get people to slow down. So that's what we're up against, and that's what you're going to bring me.
Sir, I'm sorry. You're at three, about three and a half minutes. Go ahead and finish up.
No, I'm done. I don't want to take any more time. I'm just trying to stress to you how this is not a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else here to come forward? All right. This time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Invite any of my colleagues, if you have any questions again for either the law director, Mr. Merriman, or Mr. Forsner.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Danette, do you think, in your legal opinion, do we have any reason to deny Arbor Homes?
Well, again, it comes down to the criteria that's in twelve-twenty oh four E. That's your review criteria. And whether or not you believe that the proposed development meets those. The one thing I can say legally is, based on just what I've seen, even if the covenants in Section One were applicable to this new, the city has no authority to enforce private covenants. If those are enforceable on the existing lot, then the... When you protect covenants like that in a subdivision, they're enforceable between the individual property owners. So if any of the property owners believe they have that and that that is applicable, they can always seek to enforce those themselves. We do not have legal authority to enforce any private covenants in a subdivision, unfortunately. Do you have the criteria in front of you, or do you need me?
Is it...
We have it. This one here.
Okay.
And I... I'm sorry.
No, that's there. That's there.
You also, based on any of the testimony that you've heard this evening, if there's anything you feel you need more information on, you're not required to take action tonight. You can table it and direct staff to bring any further information back to you that you feel you need.
So, Danette, I'm really struggling with this new piece of information we got today. And I don't... This is the land unit development. This was the protective covenants and restrictions.
Yeah, that's what she just said. We can't enforce this because it's under their covenant, not the city's. So even though it says it here, that's we can't enforce it.
But if a owner... If a private owner has this, and this was their understanding of the purchase of their property, doesn't that convey?
That's between them and the other property owners. And in this case, the developer would be a property owner. The city has no legal standing to enforce those private covenant. We had a gentleman at one of the former cities I worked at who built what we called the Robinson Crucial House. Every time we turned around, he was building more things on it, and they were in violation of the covenants of that subdivision. The city made an attempt to enforce that, and we got smacked down pretty hard. The courts all the way up to the Ohio Supreme Court have said that it's enforceable between neighbors, between the property owners that are affected by those covenants. We cannot enforce private covenants in a subdivision.
So let me... Can I ask you? So I just want to make sure with the overview of the proposed concept plan, those like there's some additional items that have been added, like the new second entrance for Timber Ridge neighborhood. Are those part of the items that we're talking about that the builder stated that he's looking at adding?
Yeah, those are some of the... You might say the concessions.
Okay, that came out of the planning and zoning meeting, I take it. Those are the ones.
And/or the process of review, with staff review to ensure that compliance with the code.
Okay, very good.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah.
So... All the information provided tonight was very good. But part of what we're constrained by is policy and the laws that we put in place that constrain us as the council as well. And part of that has to do with the fact that we have a new plan for zoning, the next plan. And there are criteria that obviously are new criteria since the nineteen nineties, early even the nineteen eighties. We have about fifteen specific criteria that we held the Planning and Zoning Commission accountable to, those citizens and our staff, to do an evaluation on. And my sense is that we need also, as a council, some time specifically to look at those criteria and make sure that we concur with that. So what I would recommend is that we table for this evening and have a work session on that so that we all feel comfortable with the recommendation and the understanding of that. Now, all I would offer to the folks in the community is many of the things that you've brought forward are not in those criteria. Not that they're not valuable to you or heartfelt, but they're not specifically in those criteria. It doesn't mean in the future that we couldn't amend our ordinances to include other criteria, but they don't exist there now. So will... My recommendation would be that we would take the specific criteria that we laid out in the laws of the city and the information that's been provided by our staff and by the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, realizing that that commission that works on these things for us... So when we say we have one staff member, we also have a commission that has a responsibility reviewing those items and making a recommendation to the council. So we have to take that into consideration as well. But I believe it would behoove us to go through those and make sure that we specifically understand those and that we can concur with those. Because at the end of the day, that is our criteria. Is that a fair statement?
Right. That's the best statement.
Right. So I would like to...
I think, if you don't mind, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to table this until the next meeting so that we can have a chance to go over these items and talk with our law director.
Point of order, just to be clear, because the mayor used the term "work session." Do you... Are you thinking you want to skip? Because our next meeting is the twenty-second, so it's a little truncated. As an alternative, I could offer up if you wanted to meet in pairs or threes with our development staff.
Yes, we could do that legally, not as...
Right, right. And then we could accommodate your schedule.
Okay, yeah. Just because we're so smushed in.
Right, and holidays. I know people have plans.
There won't be time to do...
Well, and then you could discuss it as a group then on the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second. We could be individually up to three council members and have open discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah.
I'll second Fates' motion.
Good.
Okay, before we vote on this motion, does Mayor Herschel need to rescind his introduction?
No, we're just tabling.
No, I think we're just tabling.
Just making sure the procedure...
Yeah, you're just tabling it.
Great. All right. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Seres to table this item until our next meeting, and that was seconded by Councilman Crawford?
Reynolds.
Reynolds, sorry. I didn't know which one we...
You're looking at one, but saying the other.
All right. So folks, there will be no vote on this tonight. This will go to vote at our next meeting. So, and because of the holidays, that meeting's actually scheduled on...
The twenty-second.
Yeah, it's going to be on Monday, December twenty-second, so we can get that meeting in before the holiday. Our next regular meeting would actually follow on Christmas Day. So in light of that, we moved that meeting months ago to Monday, and that is the time of...
Tuesday, the twenty-second.
No, it's Monday, the twenty-second.
No, it is Monday, the twenty-second. Yeah, it's Monday, the twenty-second.
Ten AM, right.
At ten AM, yes.
Okay, at ten AM. So we're not going to take any action on this tonight. We are going to go ahead and allow you guys...
You have a properly seconded motion, but you do need to take a roll call to table it.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. So we're going to get a roll call to table the item, and then we'll go from there. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Folks, we're going to go ahead, and I'm making a motion. Council needs to go into executive session regarding labor negotiations, security and response protocol, and some general legal advice from our law director.
And property as well.
We do that executive session right next door. So there won't be any action on your item. So you're welcome to stay if you'd like. We have quite a few items that we have to go over in there. We could possibly be in there, I'm told, ninety minutes. So you're welcome to stay, but at this time, you're also dismissed to go. Thank you very much. I need to make a motion to go into executive session? Do I have a second? You need to make that motion a second.
We need to take a vote to go into the executive.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion second.
I'll second.
Roll call to go.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford? Councilman Probst? Councilman Walker? Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.[386.12]
Thank you, ordinance 2025-27 to provide appropriations for current expenses for the city of Xenia for fiscal year ending December 31st of this year, declaring an emergency. We'll turn the floor over to Mr. Duke.
Thank you, President Smith. We're requesting additional appropriation for one purpose this evening. That is related to building inspection and fees that we would pay to NIC for the permitting services and building inspection services. There has been a substantially high volume of building inspection. There's a lot of development happening, so this is actually a really good thing. There's requests for lots of building permits and the services related to those. This is a record year as far as permits that have been issued from a monetary standpoint at least. And so in order for us to pay NIC for services that are rendered in December that will be built for in January, we need to get some dollars appropriated and encumbered to pay that last month worth of services that are being provided. We're requesting tonight that $50,000 be appropriated in the 198 cost center to fund that last month's worth of services for building inspection. We have bumped up the 2026 budget for building inspection services anticipating perhaps an even larger year next year from a development standpoint. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this request.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Duke? All right. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance as an emergency.
If the President had moved to adopt ordinance 2025-35?
A second.
Thirty-four.
All right. Thank you. Moved as an emergency. Any questions or concerns? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is an introduction. This is amending Chapter 884 titled under the License Tax of the City Code and repealing Table P 8.6 of the City Fee Schedule. Back to Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. There are a variety of license taxes that can be enacted by both the city and the county. Those can add to a maximum of $30 between the two. The city currently has a $20 license tax fee. That is a combination of three of the county, the county fees, and then one city fee that has been approved. That city fee was approved in accordance with Section 4504.172 of the Ohio Revised Code, and that was actually adopted clear back in 1987. And so we've been collecting that $5 license fee for the last 30 or almost 40 years now. There is one more fee that the city has an ability to enact. It's under O R C 4504.173. This is a $5 fee. Council, as they have, as you're all well aware, exploring all options for generating additional funding for street improvements, has tasked staff with bringing back legislation to enact this $5 fee that is available to us under the Ohio Revised Code. If enacted, this would bring the city's license fees to $25. That is on par with both Beaver Creek and Fairborn, who have already enacted these fees. So we would be in good company here in the county as far as, as far as the license taxes. There is another $5 fee that the county has the ability to enact. I'm not aware at this point of any intent on their part to enact that last $5 fee that would be available. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this. It would generate approximately $120,000 in additional revenue annually for the street program.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Duke or comments? All right. Thank you for that input. And I'll ask if anyone would care to introduce this.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Introduced by Councilman Crawford. Our next item is also an introduction, ordinance 2025-06, amending 881-06 of the city's municipal income tax code titled non-refundable credit for tax paid to another municipality. So we'll turn this over to Mr. Duke.
I'll take this one as well. Thank you, President Smith. Again, in effort to find any additional funding for street rehab, council tasked staff with taking a look at reciprocity, the credits that are currently granted under city code. The city currently has a 2.25% income tax rate. We have maximum credit that's allowed up to 1.5%. And so we brought back three different iterations for council to consider. One is a reduction in the credit of 0.25% that would set that credit at 1.25%. That would generate approximately $374,000 annually. The second option is a 0.5% reduction, which would set the city's credit at 1%, and that would generate approximately $760,000 annually for street paving. And the third option is a 0.75% reduction in the credit, which would set our credit at 0.75%. And that would raise in the neighborhood of $1.139 million annually for street, for street paving. The staff is not making a recommendation on these credits, but simply wanted to present the various options to council. I believe the legislation for each of these three options is drafted and available if council would like to pursue one of these, these three options.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Duke or comments?
Yes, sir. Yeah, in the packet we were given, it just mentioned the quarter percent increase. And we were just given the other options here this evening. And if it, if it was my brothers, I would, I would move to introduce the quarter percent reduction and the other two.
All right. Thank you very much.
What does that quarter get us total, I can't?
The quarter percent reduction is estimated to generate about $374,000 in additional revenue annually.
Oh, okay. It's on that.
My understanding too is that we're not anticipating we're going to get 100% of that next year.
Correct. In fact, we wouldn't. A lot of times, especially when you're reducing something like the credit, some of the folks who work in other communities aren't aware of those tax changes. We'll do our best to, you know, get that information out there on social media, but it's not something that is, that people are typically engaged with or to. And so typically what happens is there's a year where they don't make the estimated tax payments that are required, or they haven't, they don't increase them to the level that they should be increased. We'll typically work with people and reduce any penalty that they have in that first year, explain to them that there were some changes that they need to consider moving forward. I think it's more likely that we would receive probably about half of that amount in, in the first, in the first year that this is enacted. And then in those out years, we would start to receive amounts that are more in line with these estimates that we provided to council.
And if we rescinded this in the November, December timeframe, folks either, as they file their taxes in 2027, they could either would not have a penalty because we've rescinded it, or they would get a refund of any payments that they had made.
Right. So if council were to enact this and then later rescind it in 2026, so long as it happens before the end of 2026, then several of these people, many of these people probably would not have made the estimated tax payments anyway. So as they, as they go ahead and create their filing based on the 1.5% credit, it would all balance itself out, and there really wouldn't be any difference in, in what they're, you know, what they're doing today. If they were to make those estimated tax payments and then it were repealed at the end of the cycle when they provide their tax return, they would get a refund of any of those taxes.
And that'd be true at any rate we had?
At any of these rates, right. If, if council were to then rescind that change in the credit or restore the 1.5%. If, if council were to then rescind that change in the credit or restore the 1.5% credit, so long as it happens in that tax year before the tax year is completed and you make that effective January 1 of '26, which is what I would recommend, if you're going to rescind it, then yeah, they, they would receive a refund for any of those things moving forward. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay, so it looks like we have a motion on the floor for a quarter percent.
Can we make multiple motions on these?
If that motion's not seconded, it fails, and someone else can, can do it.
It was just an introduction.
Yeah, it's just an introduction.
Oh, that's right, yes, it's an introduction.
I mean, we have three options here. Can we introduce multiple options and vote on those on the 22nd?
I don't think I've ever seen that done before.
I don't think I have either.
Maybe if you can use three options, it wasn't a good idea.
When does, when does that decision have to land, guys? When does this have to land?
If there are multiple, if council can't agree on introducing one, then this is what I would recommend. What was published in your agenda was the quarter percent. If someone doesn't agree with that, somebody can make a motion to amend that, increasing the percentage. You can then vote on that motion to amend, see if there's a second.
Okay.
Vote on that motion to amend, and we'll work it backwards that way.
All right. I'll make a motion to amend that to the 0.75% reduction. We need a second to see if that would go to a vote.
All right, we have a motion to go to 0.75. Do we have a second? Would anyone like to make that second?
I'll second.
All right, we'll second. Any other discussion on that? So, do you feel if, if that was rolled down to a half, would that still help or not enough?
Well, you know, if we want to press with eight miles.
Right.
We need that to do it.
Okay.
And the reality is, if we're also going to push for the income tax, right, then...
In reality, we also, we, we told the public today we'd be considering a 0.25%. So, that's why.
Well, we're in a public session, and we have an option to take something that's been introduced, and we have an option to modify it. And the public's here to hear everything that's being said, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're not doing anything untoward towards the public. And this is just an introduction tonight, and we'll have it published and before we take a vote anyways.
If there, if there's been a motion to amend, and that's been seconded, then we do need a roll call vote on that motion to amend.
Let's vote on this thing.
Right.
All right, we'll move to the question. We'll ask for, roll call, we're voting on...
A motion to amend from the quarter percent to three quarters.
A motion to amend the quarter percent to 0.75%.
0.75, an additional 0.5.
50%.
All right, roll call. I'm sorry.
This is income tax.
Yes, it's not property tax, right.
The motion is to amend it from a quarter percent to three quarters.
Right.
Okay. Are you clear?
I am clear.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
All right, very good. All right, we'll get a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
No.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
No.
Councilman Walker?
Uh.
Councilwoman Serese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
I would like to rescind my introduction.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll introduce.
Okay, great. All right, we have a rescension of the original motion by Councilman Probst, so we have to go through this again?
No.
Just introduction.
All right, great. Thank you for clarity. All right, our next item, if I can find my... All right, this is page two of three. All right, this is also an introduction, ordinance 2025-37, amending various sections of the city's income tax code to provide for the increase of the city's municipal income tax rate by 2,400ths of 1%. I'll read that in its entirety, I'm sorry. Amending sections 88101, 88103A, 88104A and 1, 88606, I'm sorry, 88106A and 3, and 881.26B2 of the city's income tax code to provide for the increase of the city's municipal income tax rate by 2,400ths of 1% for a period of five years commencing January 1 of 2027 for the purpose of providing funds for street repairs and maintenance. All right, Mr. Duke, right, or Mr. Mayorman, you're both on there.
I think the plan was for, for me to, to provide a brief introduction. Obviously, after robust study and evaluation of funding options, council has determined that a 0.24% income tax increase is necessary to provide for the resources for a long-term solution to our street rehabilitation challenge. Such a request was presented to voters last month, and the issue failed by a slim margin. As an acre street rehab has not changed, and the solution has been determined to be a 0.24% income tax increase, council directed staff to prepare necessary legislation to pursue another ballot measure under similar terms. Thus, the Resolution 2025-066 is presented, and if approved, will place a 0.24% income tax increase on the ballot for voter consideration for May 2026 primary election. If approved by the voters, the 0.24% income tax increase would generate approximately $1.9 million annually with potential for growth as the tax base would increase with rising ways, with rising, rising wages locally. These funds would be earmarked for street improvements at the direction of council. At the end of this, of the period, the income tax rate would automatically revert back to its current 2.25, or if needed, council could seek renewal of that amount at a future levy if the need to continue to rehabilitate streets was still present. I know there's been some discussion about the duration of this levy. As written this evening, the duration, or as originally directed, the duration was for a five-year period, which is in, in kind with what was presented to voters. In terms of any desire to increase to a 10-year duration, that could be introduced if you so desire, and we can accommodate that.
It could be introduced tonight and then amended, or not introduced and new direct staff to bring it back on the, on the 22nd without amendment. Part of the reason I wrote this, one of the ways I wrote this legislation, if you read the actual section, and it is important that council be clear on the time period they want. I have written it in a way that whatever time period we tell the voters, five years, six years, two years, 10 years, it will automatically expire at the end of that period. There's no further action, it will automatically revert so that, to assure that our code meets what we tell the voters it's going to do.
Ryan, you and I discussed earlier today some of the pros and cons. Could you bring some of those things up to the rest of the council about the five-year versus the 10-year duration?
Well, I mean, I don't know that there's necessarily a, obviously from the city's standpoint, just from a certainty standpoint, knowing what revenue you have moving forward, you're locking it in for another, you know, another five-year period, and you don't have to go back for a renewal. I think it could be difficult to, to get a renewal passed if you have a number of people whose streets are done in that first five-year period and then decide that, you know, it's not necessary to, you know, to pass that moving forward. But I don't know that there's necessarily a huge, you know, advantage one way or another. It's a very similar levy, it's just a matter of whether or not you want to, you want to make it a five-year or 10-year. I don't know that there, you know, the ballot language did not include the term, so I don't know that, well, it didn't previously, and so I don't know that there was a benefit to having that five-year expiration versus a 10 previously because it wasn't clearly on the ballot as far as determining what or communicating what the length of that commitment would be. So, yeah, I, from a strictly fiscal perspective, it's beneficial to have it, obviously, for a longer term. You, you have more certainty in what dollars are going to be available to, to pave streets moving forward, but that's the, the core benefit.
I think, if I can add, you know, prior discussions, and you all have discussed these options and the needs agnostium, but as part of those discussions, you know, we've identified two competing priorities. One is, you know, there, there's the need for sustained funding of this level 10 to 15 years to be able to comprehensively address this problem, to really say, yeah, there's funding here that can address this issue. On the other hand, I think part of the interest in, in establishing it for a shorter term was allow voters an opportunity to see progress and have, you know, an opportunity in five years to come back and reaffirm that the, you know, that the city's doing what it said it would do. So, you know, there's a pro and con to this. I concur with Ryan. If, you know, in, in complete transparency, five years at this rate is not sufficient revenue to get us to where we need to be, which you've identified that 70 to 80 range on our PCI.
Right.
The investment that's needed is probably over at least a 10, more like 15-year period based on the numbers that we can best generate today, or project today.
Well said.
So, Wes, I just thought we need to have a discussion about that.
Yeah, and I, I'm listening, and I'm, I would have rathered that the voters just say, hey, this is working, we want to support it, we saw what it did in the first five years, but I don't get a feeling that for those that had had their roads done, we'll, we'll get their vote again. That's, that's, that's a tough part of this whole thing.
We may be somewhere in the order of 2,500 to 3,000 homes paved in the next five years. And we got 10, 10,000 households. So, a good, a good point is we can do the eight miles a year, we may get a large number of homes. The other side of that is we're going to have a large number of homes that are paved, right, and they may not have an incentive to...
Yeah.
To come back. Because it's going to be a significant number of homes over the next five years.
And, and our population's going to be higher, but, but they're going to have new roads anyway.
Right.
The eight miles are not guaranteed, though.
What's that?
The eight miles won't be guaranteed, though, depending on the road.
It's a projection.
It's an average.
Yeah, what we've estimated is you, you know, based on, again, our best estimates in today's dollars projected forward, you need to be spending in the, in the neighborhood of $3 million a year, and if you take that amount and you look at the, the number of lane miles we have, it averages out. So, you know, they're, based on the amount that you have, you know, some years you might be able to do eight or nine miles. Other years for a roadway, or roadways that require far more comprehensive restoration, you might only do three or four. So, it averages out to those numbers, but, you know, basically, based on our best projections, it's about $3 million a year, and that would, that would begin to increase that PCI score. People would see...
That would allow the PCI score to actually start to...
Practical improvement at the neighborhood level, yeah.
But it's just, it's going to be in the thousands of homes, right? We don't know exactly the number, but, but over the next five years, it's not going to be in the hundreds of homes that'll get their streets repaired, it'll be in the thousands.
Yes, sir. And, and this is just, I, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but two tax issues back to back, we want to adjust from what was published to the public. I know nobody here is trying to do anything in court or trying to be sneaky in any way, but you look at that from an outside perspective, it does, it starts to get foggy, and then you throw on that tabling, the vote today to change it to a meeting that we were going to have at 10:30 or 10 o'clock in the morning on a Monday. It, it, it looks like we're trying to do things hurriedly and maybe not entirely above board, and I know that's not the case because we've all had these discussions. I think 10-year, I, I agree with the 10-year timeframe, but I'm just saying, it doesn't look good. Back-to-back we're doing things, back-to-back-to-back changing stuff that was published, especially when it comes to dealing with taxes and increasing taxes on people. So, that's my two cents.
Dennis, what do you think if we, if we just ask the staff to rework it and reintroduce it the next one?
I'm, I'm fine with, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with changing it to the 10 years, but I'm just, you know, voicing my opinion as a citizen, if I was looking in from the outside, it would look a little, little odd to me.
And let's just have staff resumiate to us at the next meeting, and we've, I've been in the meeting, I'll motion for a time to 6 o'clock so that we all can attend.
Thank you.
Can you give it that, Dennis, and you guys?
Yeah, I will, I will make sure I'm in attendance, even though at that 10 o'clock, this was going to be my last meeting, but I will, I will be here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Then I will just make a motion for, to have this, can you guys rework it for the next meeting?
You could just direct this, I don't think they need a motion to you because it hasn't been introduced.
Yeah, hasn't been introduced.
All we'll do in the next meeting is introduce and then table, right?
The same, the same rate at a 10, for a 10-year term.
Yes, we'll pass the resolution that will table the ordinance. Or just introduce the ordinance.
If you haven't introduced it, you don't need to table it, and I have not heard it be introduced.
Okay.
So, we will simply rework that and bring it back to you, and I'm also assuming, since we're doing that, you would like us to bring 25066 back as well, and that's off for considerations.
Is, I guess before we do that, though, let's get a sense of council about who's in favor of the five versus the 10.
I'm, I'm in favor of the 10 year because there's, there's no doubt that the roads need dug and that, that financial stability, that all is to plan better than...
I don't think that was the issue, it was five, 10 years, I think it was just the issue.
Are you in favor? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this.
And I, and I think the 10 years is, it demonstrates wisdom of this council.
Right.
Because we, you know, you know what we, you know the project of that.
The need is still there.
Right.
Right. You talked, I mean, I remember you brought up that, you know, some of us tried, you know, pretty decent cars, and we don't have to worry as much being out on the roads, but I just invested $1,000 in a new suspension system on a truck I have as a result of the roads, you know, and in my own plat in Lane Wood. So, I'm, I feel like, yeah, that would help offset and mitigate what I've just done in repairs would be way worth to me personally. That's just me, just mine.
Sure, sure, sure.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
What I'm spending to repair, you know, busted tire, a bent rim, you know, a new suspension system on a truck I'm trying to make last for a while, so it's worth it to me, yeah.
Carlos, how are you feeling about that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with this stretches it out, yeah, I'm okay.
All right, moving on, Resolution 2025-64, determining that the establishment of the Xenia Market District New Community Authority will be conducive to public safety, a convenience, and a welfare, and is intended to result in the development of a new community, defining the boundaries of the Xenia Market District New Community District, declaring the new community authority to be organized in a body politic and corporate, and appointing the board members. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, sir. Sorry, if you give it one second.
Yeah, I was like, wait.
I think I presented, but I cannot. I don't know.
Is the public hearing on this advertised?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I think we're, okay. Okay. Paul, I just wanted to make sure, the point of order, to make sure that, that procedure's followed pursuant to the statutory requirements. So, the next major milestone in the Xenia Market District development process is the creation of a new community authority district at the site pursuant to ORC Chapter 349. Local jurisdictions may establish and administer a special economic development entity known as a new community authority, or an NCA. An NCA is responsible for overseeing the formation and operation of the special district aimed at facilitating distinctive economic development initiatives for various objectives. For the Xenia Market District project, the implementation of an NCA has been really identified as a vital element, particularly regarding strategies for capital funding, ongoing maintenance programming for that site. As required by ORC 349, a petition requesting the establishment of an NCA has been formally submitted by all property owners within the proposed district. The petition includes a map of the district with legal descriptions for all included parcels, applicable zoning ordinances, and proposed zoning regulations, the proposed district development plan, preliminary economic development feasibility analysis, and other supporting documentation as well. As detailed in the petition documentation, the applicants expect to file with the county a declaration of covenants, restrictions, and agreements for the Xenia Market District NCA to establish obligations for current and future property owners to pay certain community development charges, the proceeds from which will serve as the funding instruments for public debt cancellation and to cover operating costs associated with the district property maintenance as well as activity programming. The NCA charges will essentially be consistent with what property taxes would otherwise have been at the site. Additionally, the expected covenants would include the authority to institute sales charges for operations at the site, including up to five... for operations at the site, including up to 5% room charge for hospitality services and up to 1% of retail sales. In addition to the approval of the petition which establishes the NCA district and its various provisions, the resolution presented, if approved, appoint several NCA Board of Trustees, Board of Trustee members for the initial board term. The petition establishes an initial board of seven members, the minimum required under state statute. Pursuant to ORC requirements, the distribution of the board appointment appointments are as follows. Three developer representatives on behalf of the two established project developers. This includes two appointed by Xenia REH LLC and one by Xenia CIC. Four representatives appointed by City Council as legis, as the legislative authority. This includes one local government representative and three citizen member representatives on behalf of businesses and residents in the district. For these initial board appointments, we are recommending Councilman Ethan Reynolds as a local government representative after consulting with the council president. And then for the, the citizen representatives, we're recommending Jason Lake, Eric Henry, and Chris Berger. Purpose of this is because the city will have a financial stake in the NCA and the financial mechanics of this because of its debt instrument, the bond for the site improvements. Until there is additional establishment of increment value to offset that, we felt it appropriate and is statutorily appropriate to have some controlling interest from the city. But we wanted staff members who don't otherwise have representation on the CIC, such as myself and the finance director. So with all that being said, approval of Resolution 2025-64 both approves the petition and authorizes the district creation as well as establishes the board appointments to the initial NCA district. We are recommending approval of the resolution this evening. It's the next sort of large essential step legislatively to put in place the, the capital plan for the Xenia Market District redevelopment effort. Be happy to answer any questions. We've covered a lot of this detail in prior work sessions, but be happy to answer any questions on this.
All right, open the floor for questions.
Yeah, and we, we do, it's not listed here, but you do need to conduct a public hearing in conjunction with, even though this is a resolution, the statute requires you conduct a public hearing. So that public hearing notice was published, but as we were juggling some things around on the agenda, I think it just got missed.
So we need to have a public hearing tonight on this?
Please.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, questions?
Not that anyone's going to speak, but yes.
All right, questions for Mr. Mayorman on this?
Jason may want to say that he doesn't want to be on it.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-64. Invite anyone in the audience who's eager to come up and speak either for or against.
I think they're asleep.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and invite any of my colleagues to introduce.
Mr. President, I move to introduce Resolution 2025-64.
Okay, move for passage is what I meant to say. Do we have, okay, move for passage, thank you.
I move for passage.
By Councilman Reynolds, do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Crawford.
Yeah, that's right.
Resolution, we don't have to introduce, right?
Yes. It's up or down, straight or down.
Okay.
You're correct.
You're fine.
Okay. All right, great.
All right, enter roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, our next item is Resolution 2025-65 authorizing the execution of a, am I right? Limited partnership agreement?
Yes.
Is that what that says, word? Okay. With ODOT for the E-Market District, E-Market Street from North Columbus Street to North Patton Street and South Columbus Street adjacent to Ohio Erie Trail's sidewalk project. So we're going to turn this over to Mr. Mayorman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Among the important objectives identified in our next plan, our efforts to repair existing sidewalks and create connections and sidewalk gaps in older neighborhoods, specifically in the old East End. With this in mind, the section of East Marcus Street between North Columbus Street and North Patton Street has severely deteriorated sidewalks that are unsafe and lack handicap accessibility. Added to this, a sidewalk gap exists on South Columbus Street at the Ohio to Erie Trail. As many homeowners in these affected areas do not have the means to pay for such repairs themselves, and because some adjacent properties are abandoned, our staff has sought out alternative means to fund restoration projects to these ends. Project combining these objectives will restore walkability within this historic neighborhood connected to the city's trail system and complement additional sidewalk restoration projects underway on East Second Street, East Church Street, and East Market Street. In addition to basic safety and accessibility benefits, these improvements should support renewed interest in home construction and reinvestment in the East End neighborhood. Earlier this year, the city applied to ODOT's One-Time Transportation Alternative Special Solicitation Program, and we are being awarded a federal grant for funding to rehabilitate sidewalks along East Market Street from Columbus Street to North Patton, and to construct new sidewalks on South Columbus Street adjacent to the Ohio to Erie Trail. The total grant award is $755,187.29, with no local share required. As the case with ODOT-funded projects, it's necessary to adopt a resolution authorizing a standard local partnership agreement with the department in order to move forward with the grant-funded project. Resolution 2025-65 accomplishes this, and with your approval, that allows to proceed with bidding for the project, and construction funds should be available in 2028, and so we'll, we'll plan our implementation timeline accordingly. The city will manage both the bid letting process and the oversight of the project construction, so recommending approval this evening.
All right, fantastic. Open the floor for questions.
I think we attached in the agenda report some images that Brian and our staff took, and this will be a dramatic improvement over the condition of where there even are sidewalks in there.
Congratulations, that's great.
Yep.
So when's this happening?
28, yeah.
In 2028?
Yeah, the funding will be available.
I never sent on page seven, 8.7, the reimbursement's made out to Brian for shit. All right, thank you.
All right, I'm going to approve this.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Crawford, seconded by Councilman Reynolds. There's no further discussion, roll call.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, so we can pass on 2025-066?
We're postponed to your next meeting.
All right, very good. We're going to move to Item H, Resolution 2025-67, adopting a cybersecurity program to safeguard the city's data, information technology, and information technology resources as required by the ORC 9.64. And we'll turn that over to Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. As noted, ORC 9.64 was enacted with the State's Operating Budget Bill, which is HB 96. And this requires the legislative authority of each political subdivision within the state to adopt a cybersecurity program that safeguards the subdivision's data, information technology, all of our resources associated with that. In particular, among the key things that are required are the ability to identify and address critical functions and cybersecurity risks of the city, identify the potential impacts of a cybersecurity breach, specify mechanisms to detect potential threats and cybersecurity events, specify procedures for the city to establish communication channels, analyze incidents, and take actions to contain cybersecurity incidents, establish procedures for the repair of infrastructure impacted by an incident, and to maintain security after the incident, and to establish cybersecurity training requirements for all employees of the city. I will add that most of these things we are already doing or in the process of establishing, there is a formal requirement that we establish a plan addressing all of these. Our Information Technology Division, and I want to give credit to Keith Page, our, our chief information officer, has done a fantastic job of putting this together. We've had discussions with council to review this, and so we are presenting Resolution 2025-67 this evening for your, for your approval. With that, that'll require us to begin the implementation process with this, which will allow us to be compliant by the end of the year deadline that's been established.
All right, thank you very much. Open up the floor for any questions for Mr. Mayorman. All right, thank you for that presentation earlier today. I'll take a, I'll accept a motion to approve Resolution 2025-68.
I will make a resolution. I will.
Oh, second.
Thank you, moved by Councilwoman Seris, seconded by Councilman Walker.
We'll all just try to get through them.
All right, and we're going to roll a call, please.
Did you get that, Amy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we need to make sure.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, seconded last item, Resolution 2025-68, approving and ratifying the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Green Central Communications Operators Association, known as our dispatchers. And we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. As directed by City Council, our staff did meet with the Green Central Communication, Communications Operators Association for an agreed-upon reopeners for a new collective bargaining agreement to supersede the current CBA. The current CBA would have expired January 30th of 2027. The new CBA, CBA would begin December 21st of this year and expire December 16th of 2028. Our negotiation team, myself, Finance Director, believe that the terms and conditions of the proposed agreement are fair, satisfy the interest of both the city and, and the employees, and fall within the parameters that you had established for us. The city's been notified that the union has approved and ratified the tentative CBA. With your approval of this this evening, we would go ahead and execute that agreement. If you choose not to, that would set in motion an alternative process, but I think in general, based on your feedback this evening, you're supportive. So we're recommending approval of the resolution to authorize us to, to make these changes. And I will just add, I think they're well-deserved changes.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Mayorman? I know our communication operators work super hard, super long hours. Thanks to you and staff for willing to address this issue without breaking the bank and hoping to keep retention as a focus there.
After we go home tonight, they'll be working over there through the night, and that's, that's a nice comfort to have.
Yep.
All right, other comments? No, you guys good? Everybody's, just get ready, get out of here. I'll accept a motion to accept this.
So, Resolution 2025-68.
Thank you, moved by Councilman Reynolds, seconded by Councilman Probst. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a procedural motion. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mayor Urschel due to conflict of interest.
Sure, so we have two items. First is, first motion would be to reappoint Mr. Austin Founts to the Civil Service Commission. Austin was appointed there to fill a vacancy this year, but that term expires at December 31st, and he's shown interest to want to go ahead and stay on the council for another four-year term. And the chair said he's been active, and, and Alissa endorses him on, on that reappointment. So I'd like to entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Austin Founts to the Civil Service Commission with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2030.
Second.
Motion first.
Oh, I thought you were making the motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion, yeah.
I'll second.
Second, great. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Upstand.
And then, second one is the reappointment of Melody Anderson to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2029. And Melody is here tonight, she's, I'll just say, she's very active on the Planning and Zoning Commission, takes her responsibilities very seriously, and is always prepared in those venues and is a, is a really productive member of that. So I, I, I just heartily endorse her coming back and being part of that group, and glad we have folks that have that kind of interest and passion. And I think we saw some of that passion tonight as well, too.
Absolutely.
So I'd like to make a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second on that, any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is appointed officials' reports. Thanks, Mayor, for filling in on that. Also wanted to mention, both, both members were here at the beginning of the meeting, but due to the length of it, they just decided to skip town, I don't blame them. All right, so we're going to appointed officials' reports. We'll start with Mr. Duke.
Nothing else this evening?
Nothing else, thank you. Madam Law Director.
Just one question, did council want to keep their next meeting on the 22nd at 10:00 AM? Or did you desire to move that time?
I move to change the meeting time for our next meeting to 6:00 PM on Monday, December 22nd.
Regular.
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Comment?
Who seconded it?
Is there a way, I'm sorry.
First?
Second.
Second. Is there a way to notify those that were in the audience tonight? We have their addresses of the time change in writing. Can we send them a letter?
You probably do.
For the initial notice.
And we would have gotten their names.
Just tell them due to a lack of quorum.
And we can get that out on social media, I would assume.
Okay, I just think to be fair with them. If they show up at 10, they're going to be like, what the hell?
There's a BZA meeting that night at 6.
There's a BZA meeting that night.
Well, there, is there, is there an agenda for that?
We have no applications for it, I just haven't told you about it.
Thanks, Brian.
So we'll send it, we'll-
Well, likely, we, I don't think they're going to recommend it.
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
Want to have BZA? All right, so we have a motion and a second. We're voting to move the meeting time to 6 o'clock. Roll call.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seris?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, anything else?
Just wanted to make sure you voted on that, because you wanted to do that.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping it straight. All right, Mr. Mayorman?
Yeah, seven items, just, no, I'm kidding.
I can reach it.
Let's go home.
Anything?
I'm good.
You're done.
Unless you have anything for me.
Very good. I think we're all about done. Okay, sure. Council comments and reports, if you want to speak, raise your hand. Okay.
These are some good feedback things. Community Thanksgiving meal? We had a record number of participants. We pulled 900 people that day. So kudos to folks that put that on and to all of our, our members of the city to try out all the pies for the meal. We had, there were, there were 650 meals delivered by the volunteers, which was a record number, and the rest were actual dine-in at the Seymour Banker Center, and it was full. It was, it was the first time I ever seen the Banker Center actually cold during that time. Hometown Christmas was a massive success. And getting the Santa's house back on the courthouse steps was great. And I know it was cold, but I just would say having it compacted down there on that one block on downtown got a lot of folks involved in the businesses. One Bistro was going to provide meals, and they ran out at 6:30. One Bistro was gonna provide meals and they ran out at six thirty. They, they had, in the past, they'd only serve thirty meals, they planned for a hundred, and they, they literally ran out of food at, at, at six thirty, and they had, they had to close things down. We had, we passed out, I think, three hundred and fifty Christmas stockings from the Church Association at the Santa's House. That's, that's a hundred more kids than we've ever done in the past. So, and even though it was cold, people stayed both for the carriage ride as well as the Santa's house until nine o'clock. Literally, they were turning people away at nine o'clock, I've never seen that happen in the past year. So, and, so anyways, it was really successful. And then Commissioner Mays and I went to the ex pupil associations, they have a Christmas dinner each year, and it was just good to see about a hundred people who had lived at the home have gotten together from all over the country, and they literally come back from all over the country to have a reunion there, and they're getting older now, right? Because the home was closed down in ninety-five. But just sitting at the table and hearing the stories of the people there that had grown up at the home and just went on to live successful lives is pretty amazing. And then, one other item, the African-American Minister Alliance and the Ministry Association of Xenia got together, and we're gonna be doing the Martin Luther King Day worship celebration on M L K Day at two o'clock, and it's gonna be at Wilberforce University. And both, both presidents of Central State and Wilberforce are gonna be there in attendance and participating. And we've gotten a good portion of the service is gonna be hosted by the students as well, too. So the Wilberforce Choir will be singing, the, the Alphas, which is their fraternity organization, will be there doing the ushering. We have a couple of students participating in actual parts of the, the process, we have some professors from Wilberforce that are as well, and we also have some students from Central State participating. So I think that'll be a great time for us to come together as, as a, as an entire community on, on M L K Day, so. Yes, and we're, and we'll also have a community choir on the thirteenth over at the A and B Church on, on Church Street at, at six, six o'clock is our, our rehearsal time for that. And anybody's welcome to come, you don't even have to know how to sing, just be vibrant and participate in that.
They let me do it.
They'll even take you, James.
Yeah, the thirteenth of January, right, right. So, former Mayor Bayless will be conducting that choir, she always does a great job. So anyways, just wanted, wanted to get that information out for that, that's all I got.
Thank you.